Good evening. My name is Rita Hicks and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Houston Education Fund, I'd like to welcome you to Conversations with the Candidates for At Large One. With me tonight is my co-host Jeff Reichman. And we will be talking tonight, asking some questions of the candidates for At Large Position One for City Council. Just as a reminder, all of the candidates for At Large Position One were invited to attend tonight. The candidates that you see are the ones that took us up on our offer and decided to attend. If you would like additional information about this race or any of the other races that are going to be on your ballot this November, please check out vote411.org as we continue to collect information on those candidates. This is a live conversation, but it will be posted on League of Women Voters Vimeo channel in about two days, along with all of the other conversations that we've had so far this season and the ones to come as well. If you'd like to see what our calendar looks like for upcoming conversations, you can check out lvwhouston.org. And if you want additional information about the elections that are happening this year in particular, check out houston.vote. And I'd like to turn it over to Jeff to introduce our first candidate.
So our first candidate is Chris Oliver. Christopher W. Oliver is a native Houstonian and a dedicated public servant. He is currently a Houston Community College trustee. During his tenure as a chairman, Chris helped expand the reach of HCC overseeing the building of several new campuses across the city. Chris has extensive experience working in both the public and private sectors. His career experiences include drafting public policy in Washington DC as a congressional staffer, to serving in the US Department of Labor working to ensure federal contractor compliance, to becoming an experienced businessman and entrepreneur as the owner and CEO of Ticoa Property Management Group Incorporated, a construction final cleaning company. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you for having me.
So I'm going to start off very big picture. Obviously, one of the major issues for Houston now and in the foreseeable future is finances. We have a lot of work to do around debt and balancing our budget, and one of the major reasons for that is unfunded pension liability. I'm curious, what are your thoughts about how the city can address unfunded pension liability? And what steps can we take to ensure we don't find ourselves in the same position in the future?
Well, that's a great question. I think that's been a question on most people's mind when you read the Chronicle article from a couple of days ago, and you see this $3.3 billion unfunded pension liability, and you go, whoa, what's going on? But I can tell you as someone who holds public office that things are really not as bad as they seem. You know, there are probably some explanations behind there. And so, besides, I might want to kind of retreat to doom and gloom, but it is a liability. What we've been touting is probably a tier system to deal with this issue, much like a 401K plan. Currently, I think the city funds at 36% into the fund and you contribute not. And so, we would continue along the same lines, but we would ask those, once the agreement that's currently in place expires, to probably contribute a little bit more than the city itself would do so. If you gave 10%, we match you at 37. You give 11%, we'd match you at 38, and we'd probably have a ceiling at that particular point. One of the alternatives to probably address this would be also having adjustment in the benefit plan. That would be something you may look at. And then finally, I think you would look at the other retirement systems throughout the nation and see which one sort of fits our current system. And so, you don't know how it is until you get there. And so, before I project that, this is a great city. I'm sure we'll get it figured out.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. So let's talk about oil.
Oil?
With oil prices well below $60 a barrel, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and thousands have already. What can the city do via policies and programs to protect our city's economy?
Well, I think job promotion is key. Mostly, I've learned as, again, a community college trustee, people have a tendency to go back to school, retrain. We can shift to information technology, we can shift to computer programming. There are things that we can do to help offset some of the unfortunate job losses that we have due to the economy. And I think that and workforce training, which we offer through community colleges and working closely with ISDs, can get people the requisite job skills they may need in order to make a decent living and have a decent life.
Great, thank you. So I'm curious to hear what your vision is for public transportation in Houston.
Public transportation. Well, I kind of like the light rail systems. I think I would have liked to see it go out to two major transportation hubs, Hobby and Bush and Colonial. But I think some of the things that are in place now, parking ride, Metro is kind of undergone a facelift in terms of adding more routes. In fact, just outside my house, my housing area, they've added a new route. So I think that's doing pretty good. Again, more HOV lanes being available. And, you know, obviously fixing some of the roads and streets that we have, that's been key. That's been a hot topic on the campaign trail, our infrastructure. It's kind of hard because we have 1,000 people moving in the city every month. And so, we're going to have to put our heads together to figure out how we can ease our transportation issues and working closely with TexDOT. And Congressman Kuversen should help. So I think there's some alternatives we can look at. I'll be excited and ready to go from day one.
All right, thank you. Well, we're getting close to the end of our time with you, Mr. Oliver.
Wow, so quick?
It goes by very quickly.
My goodness, I like you guys.
Well, thank you. So what I would like to do now is give you the opportunity to address the folks that might be watching at home and tell them why you're running for office and why you think that they should vote for you.
Well, as you've mentioned, I'm a native Houstonian, and I still stay two miles from where I grew up. And we're proud, my wife and I, who is also a native Houstonian. We feel very blessed to live in this city. This is a great city. It has its challenges, but I'm sure we can meet them. This can be an even better Houston and even better tomorrow, once we extend the opportunities to not only my little four-year-old son, who's going on 81 in Houston, but to your sons and daughters as well. So having said that, for even better Houston and even better tomorrow, elect me, Chris Oliver, for City Council at Large Position One.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
You've just heard from Chris Oliver, candidate for At Large Position One. Stay where you are, we'll be back in just a second with the next candidate. Welcome back to Conversations with the Candidates for At Large Position One. I'm going to turn it over to my co-host Jeff to introduce our next guest.
Our next guest is Georgia Provost. Georgia Provost is a community activist who has participated in the cultural, educational, humanitarian, political, and religious spiritual sectors of Houston life for many years. She's a photographer and owns Provost &amp; Associates, a professional photography studio. Georgia is also a motivational speaker. Georgia has been honored with numerous awards. Presently, she serves on the boards of the Bayou Bend Academy and the Youth Freedom Institute. She also served on the Harris County Appraisal District Review Board for six years. She was inducted into the Wall of Honors at TSU School of Technology, and she received her high school diploma from Charles R. Drew High School. She has pursued advanced studies at the University of Houston, Rice University, and is a graduate of the Winona National School of Professional Photography. Welcome, Ms. Provost.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us. So I'm going to start with you, very big picture, Ms. Provost, and talk about finances. Obviously, the debt that Houston has and the trying, the work balancing our budget, those are some pretty big challenges that our incoming city council are going to have to deal with, and particularly the issue of unfunded pension liability. So I'm curious if you would tell us, what are your ideas for addressing unfunded pension liability? And what steps can Houston take to avoid a similar situation in the future?
Well, first of all, I know very little about the pension, but what I do know, back in 2013, our mayor paid a million dollars to a lobbyist to go and lobby against the firefighters, because they told me this when they interviewed me. So you had a million, you could put that in savings and draw some interest for two years, and put that in their pension plan. I think what is happening is they're making an issue out of the pension plan when it's not an issue. Let's go ahead and do the right thing. This is my understanding that the firefighters, not the police, get social security, like we do when we make 65 or 62. So I think they're making an issue out of something that's not an issue, and I think they need to do the right thing. What they also need to do is cut the spending. Someone needs to do an audit of every department over at the city and see where the waste is, and I'm sure you can find a lot of it.
Okay. Our next question is about the economy. With oil prices well below $60 a barrel, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and in fact, thousands have already. What policies and programs should the city put in place in order to protect the economy?
Well, one thing they can probably do is give some incentive to some of the existing small businesses, so they can employ others. And I highly encourage entrepreneurship, and I'm telling that to my young people. You know, start your business, window washing, co-washing, even do city cleanup. This is the dirtiest city in the world, so we can do cleanup. So we need to have a Plan B, Plan C, and see how we're going to handle this, because it all affects everybody. And we need to have an alternative, and we need to put our heads together and think about what we're going to do.
Right, thank you. So another thing that we've been hearing a lot about is public transportation. With as fast as Houston is growing, with traffic being the huge issue that it is, I'm curious what your vision is for public transportation in the city?
Well, right now, I have a bad feeling with Metro, because Metro has cut out all of the services where my people catch, the working-class people catch the bus. And the rail is good. I live near the rail, and I see people riding the rail, so that's a good thing. But they need to improve the bus services. I don't know how they managed to do that, but they managed to do everything else, just like they managed to cut them and cut parking, I mean, what did they handicap use? Metro. See, if they cut the routes, bus routes, then they could automatically cut the handicap routes for the handicaps. So I think they need to go revisit their plans. I see all the advertisement they're doing on the service and the bus, and it's not working for us. And they need to go and go back to the drawing board and the table. And they really need to pay attention to a man named Paul Magazino. He's right on target, and if they listen to him, I'm not suggesting they put him on the board, but I'm saying, let him entertain what you're doing, and you'll get a better direction in what you're supposed to be doing.
Okay, all right. In a city as large as Houston, communicating with all of our 2.1 million citizens is a difficult task. So I'm curious, as a city council member, how will you use technology to better communicate and serve citizens?
Well, you know, I'm trying to involve young people in my campaign, because they know Twitter, they know Facebook, they know all of this stuff. So just get you a group of young people from all the segments. I did, I took Harris County, and I divided them up in five sections, I mean, 10 sections, listed all the communities. So get somebody from each one of them, form your community, and let them bring the news to the people. Another thing we can do is just start having some town hall meetings. Get together like we used to do, and just let people know, listen to their concerns and issues, and then do something about them. The city can't do everything, the state can't do everything, but as a community together, we can work together, involve these young people, get them to do something, then they won't be robbing and killing. Give them a job to do, let them be the voice. Let them sit out, oh, the city's decided they're going to do this, y'all send that out. The city's going to do this, the state's going to do that, this representative's going to do that, send it out. And get involved. All I'm concerned about is that they get involved in civil engagement, and if they do, that will keep them busy, because I got plenty of assignments they could get.
So when you're, if you are elected to City Council and you are working on policies for the city, what are the three most important quality of life indicators you would be considering in making those decisions?
Well, the first thing I'd like to see done is for them to look at the shared city charter. It needs to be revamped. The second thing I would like for them to look at is the environment, air. The third thing I would like to elect to look at is flooding. I mean, there are issues that we need to be dealing with other than, I appreciate the bikes and trail, and I appreciate all this, but we have other concerns in the community, potholes. And I guess it's the weather, because right down the street from me, we got a big sinkhole on Carrier Met and 288. All these engineers and technology people we got, they should be able to figure this out. You know, and we have communities, I counted about 45 communities that don't eat, that's underserved by the city, 45. That's a lot of communities. You go down, you might see a sidewalk, and if you do see them, they're all broken up, so the seniors can't ride on their little scooters, they can't even go to the store. I mean, there's a lot of things we need to be doing, and we need to set priorities on things we need to be doing. And I looked at City Hall the other day, and they're talking, wasted a whole time discussing term limits. Who cares? With all the issues that we have, you worried about term limits? How many times are you going to serve on, this is just a small talk. You shouldn't waste a whole council for that. And we got crime, and we need to be, I think, I figured it out, we got about 17, I think it's 32,000 hours, that we need to have a joint venture with the colleges, the pastors, the churches, the organizations, with the 32 law enforcement agencies. And we need to get together and figure out these problems, figure out how we're going to solve the crime, figure out how we're going to solve all these other problems that we have. Because we don't have that much time to do this, because in another 17 months, we're going to have thousands and thousands of people coming to Houston to see the Super Bowl. We need to clean up, Houston is dirty, we need to clean up the city, we need to get it first class, we need to get this crime under control, and we got to do some job fairs every month, find these folks some jobs. If you find some jobs, it won't be no crime. And everybody's not like me, I go, if I see you up on a tree, I'm going to go talk to you. What you doing sitting up on a tree? What's your education background? What skills do you have? I'm going to put you to work, because I started BMW, and don't mean no car, black men working. And everybody got to put their heads together and do it real quick. There's a solution for everything, and one person can't do it, so you got to brainstorm. Everybody put their little toothbrush in, we can solve this problem, and it ain't going to take us six months to do it. We got the resources, we got more technology than we had when I was coming up as a girl. You want something, you just go to the computer. When I wanted something, I had to go to encyclopedia, go ask Mrs. Ann, or go somewhere. No, you just punch it up. So with all this technology, we should be able to solve all this problem.
Well, we are just about at the end of our time, Ms. Provost, so what I would like to do is give you about 30 seconds to address the people who will be watching at home and let them know why you think they should vote for you.
Well, I think that they should vote for me, number one, because Houston has real problems. We need real solutions, and Georgia Provost is the real person to solve these problems. And I have a lot of things, like police, community policing. One more thing that I'm really concerned about, you have a young man named Johnny Molo with this computer heaven that need to be placed in each one of these apartments, so these kids can learn something by these computers, even the parents can learn them. And that's going to eliminate some. You have to really show people, and they don't read enough, show people, and with his computer program that he was putting these apartment units, it will help people realize how far behind they are and that they need to catch up. And I really think that voting for Georgia Provost would be just what you need, a fresh face, somebody with some new ideas, somebody that can really know what the condition are, because being a photographer in Houston for almost 60 years, I've seen it. We have too much, too many educational deserts, food deserts, all these problems that need to be addressed. The city can't do it all. You have all these communities, and these pastors, and these churches, open these doors, and let's have some community meetings, and let's decide how we're going to fix this. It's our community, let's fix community at a time, each community at a time. That's all.
Well, I want to thank you so much for joining us tonight, Ms. Provost. If you're watching at home, hang tight, we're going to be back in just a minute with the next candidate. Welcome back to Candidates with the Conversations with the Candidates for At Large One, and this time, we actually do have our next candidate. Let me turn it over to Jeff to introduce him.
Tom McCasland has worked for the Harris County Housing Authority for the last three and a half years. In that time, he's helped cut operating expenses by nearly 50% in the first year alone. Over the last few years, Tom has turned around the Harris County Housing Authority, taking it from the edge of total collapse to a well-run exemplary institution that provides housing options for thousands of low-income residents of Harris County. Welcome, Tom.
Thanks for having me here.
Thank you so much for joining us. So I'm going to start big, big picture. One of the major issues that, you know, our current council and our future council's first few years are going to have to deal with is financial. We have debt issues, we need to balance a budget, and one particularly large financial issue is unfunded pension liabilities. So I'm curious to hear what your ideas are for how the city should address the current situation, and what steps can we take to prevent ourselves from finding ourselves in the same situation years from now?
Well, it's similar to when I stepped in at the Housing Authority. We had $350,000 in the bank, $40 million annual budget, our pensions were funded at less than 60%. And we stopped spending money on anything that we could spend, that we could cut our expenses on. And we focused on real, on the core services that we were supposed to do. Spending the money wisely, making sure that we're taking care of our employees. During the time that we are cutting expenses, we actually raised salaries for the lowest-paid employees. And in my last board meeting, we went from having an eight-year vest for our pension plans to a five-year vest since we were funded at 118%. So that's my background. At the city level, we've got some hard decisions to make in terms of pensions. Those are conversations that we're going to have to make at the local level. I believe that these are decisions that should be made at the local level, since they're local taxpayer dollars, local employees, they shouldn't be made in Austin. I'm looking forward to digging into the details and doing the hard work, but we can make it, and now's the time to make these hard decisions, not five or 10 years from now.
Thank you.
So let's talk about oil. With oil prices well below $60 a barrel, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and in fact, thousands have already. What policies and programs should be in place at the city level to protect the economy?
We've done a fair, a decent job at diversifying our economy over the last couple of decades. One of the things that I think we need to do more of, and this is regardless of where oil, is help people move from those entry-level jobs to middle-skills jobs. And middle-skills jobs are jobs that you can raise a family on. And whether you're entry-level or whether you're transitioning because you've been cut from an oil and gas job, middle-skills jobs are the jobs that are going to put you back to work and put your family back on a path of self-sufficiency and success. So regardless of who we're targeting, people who've been recently laid off, or people who are working that entry-level minimum-wage job, getting them to that middle-skills job that's going to pay $50,000, $60,000 a year is something that we need to do a better job of. According to the Greater Houston Partnership, we, the businesses in Houston area, create 75,000 of these middle-skills jobs every year, and we don't have the talented workforce here in Houston. We're importing them from the rest of the United States, in some cases, from outside the United States to fill these jobs. We should be training Houstonians to fill these jobs, and we have the workforce here.
Thank you, Tom. I am curious to hear if you need next about what your vision is for public transportation in Houston.
Well, when I first moved to Houston, I intentionally rented a house that was a five-minute walk from our first light rail station, or light rail line, and I rode the light rail my entire first year in Houston. The next three years, I commuted by bicycle. I still regularly ride public transit and bicycle. In fact, when we rolled out our new lines for the bus lines a few weeks back, I parked my car, didn't drive it for an entire week, and only cycled, walked, and rode public transit. So I deeply believe in the need for good transit here. We're not going to be able to build our way out of the congestion problems that we have. There's just too many people moving here, we don't have the capacity to do that. We need to have good roads, we can make them better, we can make them more efficient, we can make sure that the light synchronization and other techniques are used. But ultimately, we need more people riding public transit, and we need to make it easier for people to ride public transit, easier for people to get on. And then easier to get from that bus stop to their house, so sidewalks, or from the bus stop to the work, the places that they're going, their entertainment or work. That's the real work that we have. We've got a long ways to go in Houston, but in the last 10 years, we've made a lot of progress on this, and Houston's the kind of city that can make this happen.
Great. So how will you use technology to better serve and communicate with citizens?
One of the things we did at the Housing Authority was really look at where we were. We were initially a completely paper-only entity. We were serving clients from all over Harris County and requiring people who were working, again, minimum-wage jobs, to come down anytime they needed to do any business with the Housing Authority and submit paperwork in person, face-to-face. That wasn't good for us from a financial perspective, it wasn't good for the clients, and it certainly wasn't good for, you know, putting another person on the road when we could avoid it. So we did a lot of work in terms of going paperless, email communication, website communication as a governmental entity that had never done that before. So both in my office, as well as pushing the city to do more of this. One of the things I discovered is I can't, my truck was stolen a few weeks back, I couldn't go down and get the police report, other than going down in person and picking that up. That's something that needs to change. We need to be able to serve the residents of Houston through electronic reports, through electronic communication, and communicate with them online. You know, as an entity that had at one point five different federal investigations going on at the Housing Authority due to work that predated me, we had a lot of public information requests being filed. At a certain point, I was able to start telling those people seeking information on our finances or seeking information on our minutes, that all of this information was online. They could go there, our check register was there, our monthly finance reports were there, our annual audits were there. All of this was online, and these are some of the same information that the city has recently fought to release. So I believe in transparency, and I'll make sure that the city does that, and do everything I can to support that.
So when you, if you are elected to council and you're working on policies and programs for our city, what to you are the three most important quality of life indicators to be considering when you're making policy for the city?
Quality of life indicators? Well, let me take that broadly, because I think that a lot of what we should be talking about is quality of life, is more than just parks and more than just bike trails. As a cyclist, I love bike trails, and as a single father, I do love parks. But the first thing is safety. Right now, only 37.3% of violent crimes in Houston are solved. I think that's a tragedy. Meanwhile, both Houston and Harris County combined are arresting 11,000 people for low-level marijuana offenses, two ounces or less. I think that's misplaced priorities. I'd rather take the $8 million that we're paying for booking those individuals into jail and put jail and put that towards solving the, you know, 40% plus of violent crimes, I'm sorry, 60% plus of violent crimes that we're not solving. So safety is the first indicator. Second indicator is, do I have a job? And that goes back to your question of how are we going to continue to diversify this economy? And how are we going to make sure that people have the skills they need to move into those middle-skills jobs where they can truly raise a family? The third indicator for me is, can I get around Houston easily and without my blood pressure going through the roof? That means if we're driving, we want good roads. If we're cycling or walking, we want to be able to get there without getting hit. And if we're taking public transit, we want transit that runs on time, that runs regularly, that runs frequently, and feels safe to ride. So those are the three things that I'm going to be looking at in terms of quality of life. There's lots of other issues that are specific, like stray dogs and illegal dumping, that I've experienced firsthand in some of the neighborhoods. But citywide, those three are the ones that I would focus on.
Great, thank you, Tom. So we have about two minutes left in your segment, and so we want to give you the opportunity, if you'd like, to address the viewers who are watching at home and tell them why you're running and why they should vote for you for At-Large One.
Thanks so much. I'm running because I really believe that Houston is a city that has its best days ahead of it. I've came here, worked at a law firm for the first four years, and then left to do public service. Some of the things that I've accomplished while I've, since I left the law firm, is bringing $15 million of federal funds to Houston to help build bike trails and walking trails along our bayous. I helped with the most successful bond, the Parks by You bond, that the city has ever passed, which passed in 2012, that is putting trails in parks all along our bayous across the city. And then at the Housing Authority, I worked on the effort to end veterans homelessness, to end children's homelessness, and to put the city on a path to end homelessness all across the city. We have a long ways to go, but we've made great progress on that. I bring the skills of an attorney who's represented the city. I bring the skills of someone who's gotten real work done. I'm going to be the person who digs into the details, who focuses on what really matters for the city and makes the right decisions, whether it's the financial decisions, making sure that taxpayers can trust the city with their money, whether it's quality-of-life decisions, or whether it's making sure that people are safe, making sure that we're spending our HPD dollars and the HPD is focused on the crimes that really matter. That's the kind of city councilperson I'll be. I do hope that you'll vote for me in November. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you're watching at home, sit tight. We'll be back in just a minute with the next candidate. Welcome back to Conversations with the Candidates for At-Large Position One. Let me turn it over to Jeff to introduce our next guest.
M. Griff Griffin was born into an Irish-American family in Boston and moved to Houston at the age of 19 to take advantage of a basketball scholarship at the University of St. Thomas. He is currently a private investigator in one of his daughter's firms. In 2011, Griff was honored by the Concerned Citizens of Housing Coalition for helping create and introduce the 311 Self-Help Hotline. He fought and won the battle to lower the drainage tax for all Houstonians. In 1965, he opened Griff's Pub in the Montrose area, which served as a platform and a stage for him to support dozens of charities and help launch a handful of high-profile community service projects, including the City of Houston's 311 Helpline. Griff is the oldest surviving, Griff's is the oldest surviving sports bar in Houston. Welcome.
Thank you. God, that buildup was, God bless it, that's it. Well, thank you so much. It's an honor being here. Excuse me for being a little late, but, you know, it's a great city, you know? You do those things when you have a great city, and these are things that, some of the, some of the things that 311 was amazing, but if it wasn't for Mayor Brown, who never gets much credit, you know, you have to have somebody that moves it forward, you know? Just like right now, I'm working on a transit program. It's my third year. I do a lot of stuff behind the scenes, and this is where sometimes, it's a hard time being the longest-running candidate and never, and the oldest one. But, you know, if you love working with people and you love the city, and that's, like you said, that's Houston. I've been very fortunate, you know? Like you said, came down in '59 on a basketball scholarship, stepped out of Hobby Airport and looked up in the air, and I saw, high tension wise, I thought they're oil wells. I said, "This is it, this is it." And then, which is so lucky, as a sophomore, this is amazing, because, you know, right now, we're going through some little racial things that people say, "Hey, this city, this Houston city is great." As a freshman, now imagine walking out from the dorm. I had never been to a segregated lunch counter. That was in 1959. Within five months, all the lunch counters were open to everybody. Now here, as a sophomore, an invitation came out. They were looking for a teacher, coach, and athletic director at St. Teresa's Grammar School, which is right by the memorial park. And the guy said, "Well, Griff, this is quite a chance for you, but it's the first year they ever integrated the schools." And lo and behold, those kids came there, and what a great group, mixing the group together. Houston is that type of city. We do care, you know? And I look back at, you know, we took about a quarter of a million Katrina victims. And you look around the state, what other, what other cities took very large group? But Austin took 5,000, Dallas 10,000. No, it's Houston. And like I said, right now, there are, you know, we're in a tough financial thing. I've got a couple of ideas that I've worked on for the last couple of years that I think will help Houstonians.
Well, let's jump right in, right there, Mr. Griffin, because that's actually my first question, is about one of our very large financial challenges, and that's unfunded pension liability. Can you please tell us what your ideas are for addressing the unfunded liabilities, and what can Houston do to ensure we don't find ourselves in the same situation in the future?
You know, there's, the experts have been working on this for about eight to 10 years on this, you know? I'll tell you an example that I had. San Francisco was actually having the same trouble, and I cut at the action out of the Wall Street Journal. I said, "God, I need to call." So I called San Francisco, and I said, "Listen, you have the same pension. We're having the same problems here. How did you, how did you do, work with that?" And he said, "Mr. Griffin," they're very nice. He said, "What we did was, we put all the things on the table, and what we went down to the best three things that would help with the pension." And he said, "We put it on the voters. We put it out there, and they voted. This is the three things we need to do, one or the other one. What is the nicest?" And he said, "It worked out pretty good." So these are, these are some of the things that, you know, you have to work with, you know? Like, to me, the greatest thing that I've worked with, and that's where I got involved in politics, was 1993 on zoning. Zoning coming to Houston. And again, I called two major cities, Boston, where I was from, and Chicago. And I said, "We have a big, they're really pushing this zoning in Houston." And it's just amazing how many nice people, when you sit down and talk to them. They said, "There are two things that are important, Griff. Strong deed restrictions, and that if people lose them, make sure your city allows these people to get them easy. But other than that, your city has grown like any other city." And God bless, if you knew all the people that were the money behind zoning. So we joined with four or five organizations, Houston Property Rights. Barry Klein graduated 10 years after me at the University of St. Thomas. And we were able, and then during that investigation, you know, where we're pushing at Griff's and everything, I found out there was a hit list on the zoning commission, places that they didn't particularly want open. And at the time, I was president of the Food and Beverage Association of Texas, not the restaurant group. And I thought, "God, why would be, some of these places be on the list?" So Barry Klein, thank God, he got a copy. They wouldn't give me a copy of the list. 160 places were on a list to be rid of. And some of the ones, you know, that are very, like institutions in Houston, like Fitzgeralds and Rudyard's and all these little cute places there. So we worked real hard. We brought in the black ministers, because in the zoning ordinance, you can only allow one church every five miles. We brought in the small business people, because the greatest group that gets less notice and publicity is the small businessmen. And this is my 50th year starting, so I'm proud to be in that group. But over 275,000 small businesses are in this town, and that's the ones that are keeping us going. Energy down, you know, laying off people. We're looking, but what is keeping going is Houston. And so that's what, if I was elected, I would love to be small business, and the second one would be another group is seniors. Because last year, the only reason I ran, because, you know, you do it so long, it's expensive. And what happened is two senior groups called me, and they said, "Griff, your opponent voted not to increase seniors' citizen exemptions." I said, "God bless, he's talking about me." I said, "So yes, I went down, and I spent less than 5,000, but we turned out..." In fact, it got so bad the Chronicle wouldn't even, wouldn't even cover them, which was fairly nice after spending my money. They wouldn't even cover it. They said that you, "Griff, you weren't competitive." And I said, "Well, I guarantee you, we're going to do our best." Well, we ended up with 46%. Then they said, "Well," they analyzed the election and said that it was an anti-incumbent vote.
Well, I'd like to ask you about the economy. With oil prices well below $60 a barrel, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and in fact, thousands have already. What policies and programs would you put in place as a city council member to protect the economy?
Well, you know, a lot of these oil jobs there, I mean, these people came in the last, in fact, the Texas workforce told me, "Griff, there's over 500 a day have been coming to Houston." And I said, "Well, I'd heard that, and how do you know these 500 people coming per day?" He said, "We can tell by people that, you know, have their trailers end up here, they go by leases and apartments." And I said, "God, you mean the last nine months in Houston? 500 people a day?" He said, "Griff, two and a half years." So I hate to say that, but with the energy going down, we were number one. Wall Street Journal just had us number one up to eight months ago. The success of the city saying that Houston is the number-one city to go to work with. But all of a sudden, in the last, like you said, in the nine months, they cut it back and said, you know, "We're down now number ninth." So the amount of people are not going to be coming like they have been up to the year, because they, let's face it, 140,000 jobs, the energy-related, you know, 4,500 in Houston, that's, that's quite a few jobs, 4,500. But like I said, I think you'll find a lot of them have gone back, gone back home, and but, you know, as far as job promotions, I think, like I said, the small business, and that's to me, all these years, the small business is the ones that, and that's why I want to be there, create them, because there's so many talented people in Houston that, for example, there, you know, in 1990, I called, I, what would you say, organized the first crime prevention program, okay? Montrose was in tough shape. People were coming in there, they were getting after some of the gay people coming in to rob and all this stuff. There was no money, no policemen. So I called 12 business people together, and I asked them, I said, "Near town had no money." And so the guy looked at me and said, "Griff." And I asked the guys, "Bring a business with you, guy, any small business guy, maybe we can help. What can we do?" All of a sudden, they're, out of nowhere, we had about 12 people, and all of a sudden, that guy said, "Griff, what do you need?" And I said, "Well, we need our own police car, but no one's got any money to buy a brand-new police car." And all of a sudden, out of nowhere, this guy stood up. His name is Alice Houston. He said, "Griff, I've never been in your place, this is my first time, but I'm the owner of United Cab, and your reputation working with children is well-known in Houston. I've never been here." And I'll tell you this, Houston's been good to me. So I'll tell you what I'll do is, I will take, I will take my newer cab, I'll outfit it, I'll pay for it, and what I'll do is, I will, I'll donate it. And I went, "Donate it?" Unbelievable. So I said, just then, the guy picked up next to him and said, "I'm with the Stop and Go." And he said, "Griff, if they'll use Montrose and West Tama, I'll pay for all the gas." That's the car that we had saved three lives in two years that I know of, because two walked into Griff's. So as a small business people, that's the thing that we're, we're not government. There is enough talent among the small people to keep jobs going, and...
And on that note, we are actually at the end of our time, Mr. Griffin. I want to thank you so much for joining us and talking to the viewers at home about why you are running for At-Large Position One. If you're watching at home, hang on just a second. We'll be back with our next candidate. Welcome back to Conversations with the Candidates for At-Large One. And unfortunately, our other candidate was not able to join us tonight. So with this, I'll just say thank you so much for watching, and this has been a live program, but if you'd like to view it at a later date, it'll be posted on the League of Women Voters of Houston Vimeo channel and also Houston Media Source's YouTube channel. On behalf of Jeff Reichman and myself, Rita Hicks, and the League of Women Voters of Houston Education Fund, I want to say thank you for watching, and check our calendar for upcoming conversations, and also check out vote411.org for continuing information about the races that are going to be on your ballot this November. Thank you and have a great night.